And we're live.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 7th meeting of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education. Ms. Charis, can you please begin with your spill?
Of course. Good evening. Bienvenidos. Welcome. And siguiente mensaje sera repetido en español. After a few procedural items, the board will hear 30 minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there's a second and final opportunity for public comments. So if you do not get a chance to speak during this first call, we encourage you to stay and do so at the end. To participate in public comment, click on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the raise your hand button. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. Remember that if you wait to raise your hand, you may not get to speak in the beginning, depending on the number of speakers and may need to wait till the end. So please raise your hand now if you wish to participate in public comment. The board president will usually call our students first. So if you are a student, please write student either the beginning or the end of your name. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker. And on an individual basis, has the discretion to allow extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. While you are speaking, there will be a timer. Please be mindful as the time lapses. If you are still speaking when your time is up, please finish your sentence with try not to go beyond your time. Thank you. Después de unos procedimientos, de inicio, un periodo de media hora, treinta minutos será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Al final de la junta habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes no pudieron participar durante la primera llamada. Este para comentar durante este periodo es elija la mano, raise your hand abajo de su pantalla para comentar por teléfono. Puede hacer eso presionando estrella nueve. La presidenta Brown otorgará uno, dos o tres minutos por orador. Y tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o otra adaptación especial. Aparecerá una cuenta regresiva en su pantalla cuando esté hablando. A favor de terminar su oración, pero cuando se termine su tiempo, trate de no sobrepasarse mucho. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Charis. At this time, can you please call the role for the Board of Education, beginning with our student director?
Director Ian Siegel.
Here.
Director Anna Vasudev.
Presenting.
Director Julie Sinai.
Here.
Director Ty Alper.
Here.
Vice President Laura Babbitt.
Here.
And President Kadija Brown.
Present. Thank you so much. At this time, we need to approve this evening's agenda. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Move by Vice President Babbitt. Is there a second?
A second.
Second Vice Director Alper. Ms. Charis, can you please call the role, beginning with our student director?
Student Director Siegel.
Yes.
Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt.
Yes.
And President Brown.
Yes, thank you. At this time, Vice President Babbitt, if you're ready, can you please just report out from closed session?
Yes, closed session began today at 5:35 PM. All members were present until 5:53, when Director Alper joined. For item 3.1.1, it was moved by Director Vasudev, seconded by Director Sinai, Director Alper, and Estentia, and all remaining board members voted in favor. For item 3.2, we heard an update and gave direction. For item 3.3, we will return to closed session after this meeting to continue to address this issue. And that concludes the report out. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice President Babbitt. At this time, we will move to our first opportunity for public comment. As I said in the opening, if you are a student, please put student or S either in the front of or behind your name so that you may be given priority to speak. At this time, we have almost ten speakers, nine speakers. And so everyone will be given two minutes to speak to the Board of Education this evening. We will begin our public comment with Amanda Moreno, followed by Johanna Berg, with our last public commenter for this evening, being Corey Osteria. Can you please promote Amanda Moreno? Hello, welcome.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Go right ahead.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Amanda Moreno, and I'm an English and Ethnic Studies teacher at Berkeley High. Today, I'm here to speak on my experience in writing letters of recommendation in the hopes that the district can support compensation. Imagine, it's the first day of school and many of your old kids come back to your class. Hello, Ms. Moreno. Hope you had a nice summer. I know it's early, but I was wondering, could I get a letter of rec? It's only the first day of school, but before you know it, more students roll in. Fifteen requests becomes twenty requests and twenty requests turn into thirty by winter break and more and more file in after. Summer internship programs, scholarships, EOP, QuestBridge. The due dates are approaching, but there's no time to write them. So you try to move quickly during your lunch break. Even with a template you've made, each letter takes at least an hour to do and longer to do well. Lunch isn't enough. You think, maybe I have time over the weekend, but you promised your students you'd get their papers back by Monday and you've got plans with your family. Monday rolls in and a self-proclaimed first-gen student comes in asking if you have any more room for letters of rec. You say, unfortunately, no, and then they begin to cry. You're the only teacher they bonded with, the only one they could think to ask, and this private school could pay their way through college. Don't you want them to have this opportunity? Their grades weren't that good. Your letter could mean a lot. It's just one more. Meanwhile, your inbox is full of requests. Hey, Moreno, Latinx Heritage Month is coming up. You're gonna help the kids put on a school-wide celebration, right? All you can think about is the twenty other letters that are due, the lesson plan that needs to be ready by tomorrow, the student who needs mental health support now, the million other things you've been tasked. You call in sick during the sub shortage to catch up, knowing little will get done in a day. Subplans, lesson plans, gradings, check-ins, letters, the cycle repeats. This unfortunately is not a single story. Teachers are servicing almost every need of our students almost every day, and we do this almost all the time for free. Since I was a little girl, I've always known I was meant to be a teacher. I have never had or wanted another career. And this is my twelfth year, and unfortunately, my last. Years ago, I chanted with my colleagues, I love my job, but I can't afford it. And this year, I truly mean it. I hope that you'll consider compensating my colleagues who need to decide to stay for their unpaid labor. Right now, this job in Berkeley is undervalued and not sustainable. Remember, when teachers win, students win. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we will have Johanna, followed by Sydney.
Hi, welcome.
Hello.
Can you hear us okay? Hi.
Can you hear me? Sorry. I forgot.
Yes. Go right ahead.
Hello, my name is Johanna Berg, and I've been teaching biology at Berkeley High School for the past 10 years. Last year, I wrote 31 letters of recommendation. Thirty-one. That at an hour per recommendation, that's almost a full week of work done completely on evenings and weekends and at lunch. Teaching a primarily junior course in the Science Department means that if a student wants to use a science teacher recommendation, it's on me. Students are told they need a science or a math teacher. Deadlines are early in the year, so it's preferred that junior teachers write them. If I were to limit the numbers I was willing to write, it would negatively impact my students and put a burden on other teachers. Students who do not have family support encouraging them to ask first in June of the prior year, find it harder to get a letter because many teachers are maxed out. This is an equity issue. I'm so happy to write these letters for my students because I love them and I want the best for them. I need to have this labor recognized, either by release time or compensation is just not sustainable with neither. Thank you so much for addressing this important matter.
Thank you as well. And next, we will have Sydney Ardo, followed by Angelica Too.
Hi, Sydney, welcome. Thank you. Hello, Berkeley Unified School Board. I'm Sydney Ardo, and I've been a science teacher in Berkeley Unified for the past six years. As a teacher that has taught regular and AP Sciences to juniors over the last four years, I am asked to write a large quantity of letters of recommendation for college admissions, summer jobs, internships, and scholarship applications each year. Because these letters are important to my students post-secondary options, I do not turn students down when they ask. I end up writing a lot of letters of rec each year. This year, I have 38 requests already, and it's only September. As a teacher who does not say no, I find I get asked by many more students who get turned down by other teachers who have reached their physical limit. I want to help my students to get all the opportunities that they want. However, the time that is required is overwhelming. This task is way beyond my workday and only impacts some teachers as only junior teachers are asked to write letters. These letters require an overwhelming amount of communication with families and students and often come in on weekends or in the late night. Each letter takes a minimum of 45 minutes to research, write, proofread, and submit, and often it takes more. Some students' letters need to be edited for each program, for each school scholarship or internship that they are applying for. And there are strict deadlines, so entire weekends have been dedicated to writing letters of recommendation. Again, I just want the best for these students, so I don't turn them down. And I just need time or compensation to do that. And I think BFT's proposal is based on practice and is reasonable, is a reasonable way for us to do what is necessary to serve our students. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you as well. At next, we will have Angelica Too, followed by Isabel Fielder. Fielder.
Hi.
Hi. Hi, my name is Angelica To, and I am a speech-language pathologist at Berkeley Arts Magnet in John Muir Elementary Schools. And last year was my first year as an SLP. Last year, I was also tasked with completing about 30 speech-language assessments. An assessment takes about 10 to 15 hours to complete from start to finish. In addition to assessing, SLPs also have to juggle caseloads of up to 48 students with IEPs, not counting those receiving RTI and needing consultation. This is unmanageable for a work week based on the numbers alone. I went into my first year with aspirations of establishing a solid foundation about how to be an SLP. In addition to growing my collaboration skills and knowledge of neurodiversity-affirming practices, knowing that my experience would be somewhat affected by the pandemic, I had no idea that my time and energy would be consumed by assessment after assessment to the ultimate disservice of my students and my personal learning. Not having formal assessments or formal limits on assessments means that this will happen year after year. I did the best that I could, given the circumstances, but it was a burden that no service provider should bear again. I hope that the district will consider a fair assessment cap, one that reflects that it values the work of SLPs and takes on the responsibility to do right by the children and the families that we serve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Isabel Fielder, followed by Matty Tiplam. Hi, Isabel.
Hi. All right. Hello, Berkeley Unified School Board. I am Isabel Fielder, and I have been a speech-language pathologist in BUSD for two years. I am struggling to find a balance between the many important aspects of my job. I am expected to provide direct services to students, conduct initial and triennial assessments, and attend IEP meetings. Since I am newer to this career, I have, I also have to stay current on research and learn new therapy techniques. Although each evaluation ranges in terms of the amount of time they each take to complete, they range from 10 to 15 hours apiece. Last year, I had 17 assessments. BFT's proposal to limit the number of evaluations that are completed over the course of a year ensures that speech therapists are able to allocate time appropriately to not only expand on their knowledge within the field, but also to increase process efficiency with other aspects of what it means to be a therapist in the school setting. This includes MTSS support as well as other things such as collaboration with other staff members. This balance is important to serving the needs of our students. Most SLPs will not reach these limits, but the cap represents the balance needed to do all aspects of our job well. When we do not consider the need to build in balance, we risk limiting the benefits of our students receive from working with professionals who are fully supported and empowered in their work. Thank you.
Thank you. At next, we will have Matty Tiplam, followed by Andrea Daegos. Hi, Matty.
Hi. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Excellent. I hope, I don't know if you can see me up here. Um. I would like to speak about the Milvia Plan Ops project, but before that, just a quick note. Six of the speakers so far are teachers, bringing really important and I think very valid issues. But um they have a union with a standing five-minute speaking time in front of the board regularly. And those issues can be presented in that way as opposed to taking time from the true general public that has no other way to communicate with you, and I hope you would consider that. I think it's just not inappropriate, not inappropriate, but um it takes time from the public to actually express itself while the teachers have other opportunities. On our young plan ops, I'm glad that you are being presented with a recommendation to cancel the plan ops at Milvia. I'm glad to see a actual serious decision-making presentation by facilities today. I'm just sad to see this coming six months later. For $29,000, which is about 0.1% of the project cost, this material was, should have been presented in front of you before you made the decision. This is how decisions are made. What you were presented were some kind of broad stroke marker lines on some board. Now you have information. I'm happy to see it, but it just proves the other point, which is the Milvia parking project has to go away. The costs keep going up, the number of spots keeps going down. So the question to you is, when do you stop? At what point do you say, this is just unreasonable? These spots are costing 300,000 to 180,000 a unit. At some point, you should have a red line, and I'm curious to hear what that is. Thank you.
Thank you as well. At next, we will have Andrea Daegos, followed by Hillary Fong.
Hello. Sorry, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, we can hear you just fine. And we can see you.
Okay, great. Thanks. So hi, Berkeley Unified School Board. My name is Andrea Daegos, and last year was my first year as a speech-language pathologist. As a returning SLP this school year, I was so excited to see my students again. But as excited as I was, I was more worried. I was worried about becoming overwhelmed with assessments again and worried about how I was going to manage juggling an overload of assessments and meeting my students' needs. So last year, a year where I was still expected to be under supervision to learn the craft of our field, I was simultaneously expected to complete over 20 assessments. As you've heard, each takes about 10 to 15 hours. So for myself alone, that was an additional 300 hours on top of case managing up to 48 students, providing direct services, supporting students through MTSS, and attending IEP meetings. But the district has said that I can have up to 48 assessments and no limit at all on initials. The math doesn't add up, meaning that I have to be the one to decide between missing student services, working after and before the duty day, and not taking a lunch break in order to meet these deadlines. Beyond myself, this impacts our students and their opportunities to progress. Please support BFT's SLP assessment limit proposal. It strikes a balance between directly serving our students and assessments and helps keep speech pathologists in Berkeley. Thank you so much.
Thank you as well. At next, we will have Hillary Fong, followed by Corey Oster.
Hi, I'm Hillary. Thank you for having us. Did I do this correctly?
Yes, you did it perfectly. We can see you and we can hear you. Go ahead, Hillary.
Okay, feel free to start the timer. Okay, hello, my name is Hillary Fong, and I teach Ethnic Studies and Social Living for ninth graders at Berkeley High. I'm speaking tonight in strong support of BFT's proposal for more compensation. I've been teaching at Berkeley High for the past four years, and for the past three years, I've been in the U9 program, working in a hive team of teachers and counselors to support a cohort of ninth grader had shown and illustrated and reinforced the importance of developing strong relationships with my colleagues and students. Luckily, I am in a hive of core veteran teachers with stable living conditions. However, over the past two years, we have had a 25% of certified positions in the district turnover, undermining the potential and achievements of the U9. An increase in salaries for educators as outlined in BFT's proposals for the next two years do not completely alleviate the rising inflation and cost of living, but they are necessary. This increase would make it more likely that educators can afford to live close enough to where they can work and stay with BUSD as committed educators. We need teachers more now, we need teachers now more than ever, especially with the obvious mass teacher exodus from being teachers. I am saddened to hear far too often that our profession is unsustainable and leads to our amazing educators to leave our profession. The increase in salary for educators, as outlined, will be a step in the right directions to retain educators. Thank you so much for considering this increase in pay for educators to help all of us stay in Berkeley and give all BUSD students in every part of this, in every school to have a team of educators who have a strong sense in of their role in and relationship to BUSD students, families, and the broader community. Okay, thanks.
Thank you also. Next, we will have Corey Oster, followed by Alexa Sorders.
Good evening, Ms. Ford Marthell, for school board members and Berkeley community. My name is Corey Oster, and I'm one of the co-leads of the math department at Berkeley High School. I'm here to speak tonight about the necessity for teacher compensation for writing letters of recommendation. At Berkeley High School, I teach Math 3 and Advanced Math 3. We are 99% of my students are juniors. Watching juniors explore their passions and listening to them talk about their dreams and hopes for the future is extremely rewarding. It also comes with a hidden cost, the letters of recommendation the following year. On the first week of the school year, I received 14 requests for a letter of rec. By now, I've received 32 requests and have had to say no to some fantastic students whom I care about deeply. I just don't have the capacity to write more than 20 strong letters before mid-November. On average, I can complete a letter of rec for the Common App in about an hour and a half. However, many students apply to highly selective schools who use a separate portal for their applications. A handful of other students are candidates for augmented review at UC schools. Still, other students are applying for outside scholarships and need separate letters of recommendation. All of this means that between now and November 15th, I will easily spend 30 hours writing letters of recommendation. And where will these 30 hours come from? Largely from my own unpaid time on weekends and after school. As we go forward, please consider earmarking money for either release days for teachers to write letters, to write letters of recommendation, or for compensation for each letter written. We're so proud to watch our former students head off to college. Just please remember that behind all of those acceptance letters, there are many hours of writing letters of rec. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you as well. At next, we will have Alexa Sorders, followed by Douglas Legg. The commenter, our last commenter was supposed to be Alex, I mean Corey, but we will try Douglas Legg. Hello, Douglas.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Great. I'm not a Zoom bomber. My name's Douglas.
Thank you so much.
My name is Douglas Legg. I'm the parent of two Willard Middle School students. And during the day, I work as a deputy city administrator for the city of San Francisco, where I oversee capital planning, real estate, capital project delivery, and I'm here to speak about the Milvia Street project. I'm very happy to see that the changes with taking plant management out of the project have occurred. But I want to express my strong agreement with the earlier caller about the really enormous waste of resources in building parking spaces for so much money. I've spoken at a couple of the Bond Oversight Committee and other groups about this and feel strongly that the Facilities Division and the School District should be exploring alternatives. For one thing, the city of Berkeley built a very large parking garage about one and a half blocks. I guess it's two and a half blocks from the Milvia site. And immediately, we're finding that the garage was half-full. I've spoken to people at the city of Berkeley. I don't know if anybody at Facilities or the School District has. But there's potential to have a deal where the School District could spend general obligation bond money buying a portion of that building at a much lower cost for parking space. And it would be a win-win for both the city and the School District. I think it's, I think it is a really big mistake at a time when parking, you know, we're trying to reduce the number of cars and there is available parking nearby. There's a lot more work to be done, and the School District could do better. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well. At next, we will move on to our committee comments. And as we do so, I'm going to ask that in the background, can we please ensure that we have updated our security in Zoom and ensure that we give a final exit to anyone who's on the list? Okay?
If it was somebody.
And please, you can return Douglas Legg back to the participant list. Thank you. Okay. Are there any committee comments this evening? And hearing them, are there any union comments this evening?
We have President of BFT, Matt Myers. I will be sharing the screen momentarily.
Okay. I have that open if you want me to share it as well.
President Brown, that'd be great.
Thank you. No problem. Just have to provide me with share screen abilities. If you give me the ability to share my screen, I can go ahead and share.
You should be able to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello Superintendent Ford-Morthell and the Berkeley Unified School Board. I am Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I want to first thank the Human Resources, Benefits, and Payroll Departments for quickly fixing the many issues that have come up with our first pay period. Getting our employees' accurate paychecks is a top priority, and there's been a concerted effort to get this done. BFT and the District often collaborate to make sure that the systems that are put into place are efficient and user-friendly. We are happy that the District has started to respond to some of our negotiations proposals. All of the items we are negotiating over are to solve real problems and address inequities in our collective bargaining agreement. We believe that our proposals are affordable, pragmatic, and solutions-oriented. We are keeping students at the center of the conversation. As a full-inclusion district, it means that we need to do things differently than districts that have many of their students in special-day classes. In order to hold illegally defensible IEP meetings, we need certain teachers and specialists to be present. There are times when this can only happen after school, yet we offer no compensation to anyone running the meeting or participating in it. The cost of subs during the school day far exceeds what our proposal is to pay people to work after the duty day. Albany, Emeryville, Oakland, and West Contra Costa, our immediate neighbors, all offer compensation for this purpose. Teachers and case managers are paid for many meetings of lesser significance outside our workday. These meetings, the IEP and SST meetings, are some of the most important ones teachers are responsible for, yet we ask them to basically volunteer their time to do it. If we force them to happen during the workday, as the District is incentivizing, it will cost more in terms of sub-coverage and not be as convenient for families. We are also surprised at the District's response to our elementary class size proposal. The District proposed something that does not address the problem at all. Our proposal was to cap class size at 26 to deal with some of the extremities that can occur from year to year. The District wants to cap class size at 30, which is a situation that would never happen in our district, given our averages. The District does not seem serious about putting in safeguards against large class sizes. We all agree that a methodology is necessary to keep class sizes close to 23, but the methodology the District proposed does not, nor will it ever have any impact whatsoever. The only time we would reach class sizes that large is if BSEP was not renewed. And in that situation, our contract language does not apply anyways. So, we urge the District to come and respond to our class size proposal with something that makes sense. We still have not heard anything related to compensation. Like the rest of this country, our working families are struggling under increased costs. We are lucky to live in a state that recognizes this and has allocated a record amount of money to school districts. That is to address this issue. Like our other proposals, our compensation is our reasonable within budget and are what is necessary for this district to continue to thrive. We cannot afford to fall further behind neighboring districts in compensation, which we will, and have our districts leave this profession, which they are. On a positive note, there are proposals that we are seeing progress, and we know they will make a difference for our members and our students. We thank the District for engaging with us on those proposals. When the District and the Union problem solve together, we can come up with creative solutions that will work in practice. We ask that we continue to be partners so we can get to an agreement that serves our district staff and students. Thank you.
Do we have any other union comments this evening? Oh, I see that we have T-Sung, who I believe was here for the committee comment for the PTA. I'm sorry, T-Sung, if I missed you, but can you please promote T-Sung at this time?
Hi, thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, T-Sung. How are you?
Hi, hi, good. Thanks so much. Yeah, so it's T-Sung representing the Berkeley PTA Council. I just wanted to read a letter that we'll be sending to you later on this evening, so it'll be within the time we have. So, PTA Council will be sending a letter to the Board of Education, superintendent Ford-Morthell, which I would like to read now to lodge into this public record. The letter pertains to a planned effort to revise the K-12 math curriculum across the district. So, let me just go ahead and read that to you. So, Dear President Brown, Vice President Babett, Director Alper, Director Siegel, Director Sinai, Director Vasudeva, the Berkeley PTA Council would like to comment on a plan to update the K-12 math curriculum based on approximately $1.1 million that was set aside through 2025 for this purpose. And this was mentioned in the June 8, 2022 board meeting. The District's own data show that the USD is failing to properly educate all its students with Black Latinx, English learner, special ed, foster and low-income students the least served. In light of these longstanding challenges to better serve our K-12 community, we request the Board of Education to establish a transparent process that achieves the following. And I have several headings here that kind of reads better than it actually sounds. So regarding a problem statement, multiple solutions, broad district alignment and integration, we ask the Board to share with the community the District's evaluation of qualitative and quantitative data that describes the current state of math education that a new curriculum is intended to improve. Would the Board consider requesting the District to broaden its search for solutions such as updating professional development, teaching supports, and other strategies in addition to adopting a new curriculum? It may be that purchasing a new curriculum is a necessary but not sufficient condition for success, or that it may not even be the best investment to make for all of our students at all. For instance, there is research that shows teacher-led learning can motivate shifts in practice, enhance teachers' professionalism and efficacy, and create supportive systems and strategic relationships that can sustain change. Indeed, tapping into the many years of expertise of our own teachers may be the most effective way to implement change to support all our students. We ask the Board to ensure the District has broad alignment on what needs to be done across the USD staff, teachers, and school principals, and to articulate its priority in comparison to other academic needs identified in the District. We ask the Board to require that the District ensure integration of this new curriculum with ELD, with the ASF, the African-American Success Framework, and with any other initiative the District has in place or is planning that is intended to enhance student learning and academic achievement. Regarding the decision process, we ask that the Board to require the District to employ a decision-making process that is evidence-based and supported by data. And that is that the decision process center our least-served or worst-situated students. In terms of ongoing evaluation effectiveness, whatever change is adopted, we ask the Board to require this District that it evaluate both its implementation, including teacher training and readiness, and its overall effectiveness, including the collection and analysis of longitudinal data on the same cohort of students, and present this information transparently to the entire BSD community. Finally, we would like a board member or a member of the District's senior leadership to be accountable for this entire process from seeking out and selecting revisions to the math curriculum, to implementation, evaluation, and updating as needed. We appreciate the opportunity to share our interests and concerns with you on this critical work and our desire for processes to employ that will result in the best outcome for all our students. And this is signed by the Berkeley PTA Council, and we intend to copy the superintendent as well. If I could just take one last moment, I just wanted to pivot slightly to literacy. I just wanted to give a shout-out for KQD Form Program on Literacy in California's School Students that was broadcast this past Tuesday morning. It featured two educational reporters who have covered this topic for years and Kareem Weaver, a co-founder of a nonprofit that promotes improved literacy outcomes for students. I personally found it very interesting and thoughtful, and I highly recommend it to everyone in our community. And one last plug, the Berkeley PTA will be, PTA Council will be sponsoring an informal meeting greet of our new, excuse me, of our 2022 board candidates. And that will be on Sunday, the 18th, from 2:00 to 4:00 in Strawberry Creek Park. Thank you so much.
Thank you as well. At next, we will move to board member comments. We will begin with Student Director Siegel.
Thank you, President Brown. I'd like to start off by thanking all who came and spoke at Public Comment, especially the teachers. Thank you really so much. As I've spoken about before, I believe that student support is paramount, and we cannot achieve this without supporting our teachers, especially when we continue to ask more of them. Ensuring equitable education that provides the most opportunities for each student is a must. I also wanted to thank everyone who helped with the Welcome Assembly at Berkeley High last Thursday. Despite not having a Welcome Assembly since 2019, it was a huge success. I want to thank the HHS admin, Mr. V., and especially all of the ASB student leadership for organizing this assembly. Seeing it come together gives me a lot of hope for what we can accomplish this year. On another note, I'm happy to announce I'll be holding office hours at Berkeley High during lunch on the Monday before each school board meeting in G202A. Bring your questions, concerns about the District. If you want to go through the agenda or just want to stop by and chat about your experience in Berkeley High, please come. The first one will be on September 19th from 12:26 to 1:06, which is during. And then, looking forward, I'm looking forward tonight to see the unaudited actuals for this past year. During my campaign, I wanted to focus on the budgetary happenings of the District and how we can learn from past decisions when making new ones. So, I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Student Director Siegel. Director Vasudeva, are you ready? Would you like to go next?
Yeah, I'm ready. And just wanted to thank Director Siegel for all his great comments. I'm so glad that the assembly went well and happy to hear that report out. I also wanted to thank everyone for coming to tonight's board meeting, especially our educators who came out to speak. Really appreciate you sharing your personal stories with us. I continue to be amazed by wonderful students, and I'm so happy to see everyone back in our schools. I have a brief comment tonight, but I wanted to let you know that, like Director Siegel, I'll be hosting in-person office hours this month. I'll be hosting office hours on the 25th of the month from 9:00 to 10:00 at Lavender Bakery on Solano Avenue. It's also on the board website, in case you forget, but would love to just hear how the beginning of school is going for our families and our students and education workers. I also wanted to let the public know that I continue to be committed to ensuring that our students and educators are safe on their way to and from school. Recently, I've been asked to join the City's Vision Zero Coordinating Committee. This committee will advise city staff on the implementation of the Vision Zero Action Plan, which has set a goal of eliminating all fatal and severe injuries caused by traffic crashes by 2028. I want to thank former Director Leva Cutler for her leadership working on the action plan, which includes engineering, education, public awareness, and traffic enforcement strategies approached through an equity lens. All of these primary strategies are important in making sure that we have a culture of traffic safety around our schools. So, if you have concerns about traffic safety near your school sites, don't hesitate to reach out, send an email. Come to my office hours. I would love to hear more about your experience at our schools around traffic issues and how I can represent that as part of this committee. And thank you for everyone again for coming tonight, and I look forward to our discussion. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Vasudeva. Next, we will have Director Sinai.
Good evening. Thanks. I too want to extend my deep appreciation for everybody who showed up for Public Comment. I appreciate teachers taking the time out of their evening and their personal time to come and share their stories, and I I share the commitment that President Meyer has that together the District and the Union can work for a mutually agreeable contract, and I look forward to seeing that continue to progress. I think that's really it for today. I look forward to the discussion around the parking structure at Milvia and, you know, all the great dialogue that we all have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Sinai. Director Alper?
Thanks, President Brown. I don't have any board comments tonight.
Thank you. Vice President Babett?
Yes, thank you so much. I won't repeat what my colleagues have said so well, but thank you for expressing that gratitude and confirmation of our work moving forward. And I also want to just say how awesome Back-to-School Night was last week and the week before for so many families and to thank all of our educators for getting that done. It was in-person, and I really just left feeling such a spirit of gratitude for what our educators do for our children, for the community that we create at our schools. And so, just wanted to shout that out and to express my gratitude. Thanks.
And my comments this evening are very short, just to say an appreciation to all of you who come out time and time again to speak to us during Public Comment or send us emails to talk about the challenges and the successes that you are experiencing in BSD. We really appreciate that. Additionally, I will save some of my comments for our conversation around our audited actuals. But, so I'll save that for that part, but I'll just go ahead and turn it over to Superintendent Ford-Morthell for her comments this evening.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I promise you, it's like a game for me now every time. I'm like, who's gonna say what I'm gonna say? We're getting better. Director Siegel said a couple of things, and so did Director Babett, but I made sure to add a lot of topics just to make sure I had something to say. But seriously, first and foremost, I want to thank our students and staff for their patience with these very, very, very hot days that we've experienced this week and provide the community with some information about our hot weather protocols here in BSD. We know that these days of extreme hot weather do not happen very often here. And we recognize also that there are things that we can do to help manage these days as best as possible. Our principals have received guidance relative to physical and outdoor activities and some ways to kind of mitigate the excessive heat. We sent that out before school resumed on Tuesday, and we've been asking them to monitor our students for heat exposure as well as sharing with them some best practices. They were also directed and reminded to make sure that our babies stay hydrated and the staff and the adults on campus stay hydrated as well, and to really use best judgment to modify PE, recess, lunch, and other outdoor activities as well as athletic practices. And so, even when the reported temperatures don't require those modifications, we recognize that schools experience heat differently based on their location, the breeze, the shaded areas, et cetera. And so, I've really been trying to work closely with our school teams and staff to make sure they have options and provide options for our students. I also want families to know that our athletic coaches are trained on heat illness prevention and follow the CIF guidance relative to heat and athletic practices and competitions. As we know, it's hard to keep those babies indoors and off those fields, but our athletic coaches are very well-trained in being able to engage our babies during the heat. Finally, on this topic, late yesterday, CDPH issued updated heat and activity guidance for schools, which has been shared with our principals as well. This guidance has provided a series of actions that schools should take based on the National Weather Service heat risk level, which we are monitoring throughout the week daily. So, at this time, the National Weather Service is predicting that tomorrow, thankfully, will be warm in Berkeley, but not as hot as it's been. It's predicted to be about 84 degrees. I just saw President Brown do this, just in, you know, in honor of the heat. It has been very hot, 84, still pretty warm for us in the Bay Area, but we're happy to see temperatures going down. But we will not be placed at a heat risk level, so that's good news as well. And I want to continue to encourage our parents and caregivers to send students to school in light clothing with water bottles and just celebrate again and thank our staff for doing all that they can to make sure that our babies are comfortable and cool in this very, very heated time. Director Babett, she did it. She talked about our amazing back-to-school nights. We hosted elementary and middle school. As she said, they were great. Our families and caregivers came out, students came out, and we're engaged. Thank you to the staff for showing what you do and all the amazing that you make on behalf of our students in the classrooms. We are now looking forward to our final back-to-school night, and that's Berkeley High on September 22nd. Director Siegel talked about the amazing VHS Welcome Back Assembly, so I don't have much else to say except for, despite me being only 22, I've been in education for a long time, and I have seen many high school assemblies. And I promise you, there's only been a handful of times that I've seen over 2,000 high school students so attentive and engaged. There was so much that we offer at VHS for our students. We have wellness supports, clubs, student leadership activities, and leadership opportunities. And it was just an amazing event like was shared before. It was by students, for students, and again, just want to echo that I've heard such amazing feedback from staff and students at Berkeley High about the shifts in the culture and the climate. And folks seem really excited for the year that's ahead. We have a lot of work to do, but wanted to stop and acknowledge that and say, on behalf of myself and Director Ian, go Jackets! One more. I'm almost done. Y'all didn't know about any of this stuff, did you? We are looking forward to Latinx Heritage Month. While we want all of our classes and all of our school communities to be places that uplift and celebrate the rich diversity and contributions of our Latinx community all year long. We know that September 15th through the end of October is the month designated as Latinx Heritage Month. And so, we're going to take advantage of that time to explore and highlight the diversity, brilliance, contributions, and richness of a diaspora of people, languages, and cultures, and the beautiful mosaic that is the Latinx community, both in terms of their countries of origin and specifically here in Berkeley and the Bay Area. And so, as part of our celebration, we are excited to partner with our community, you, to celebrate the richness and the diversity. We'll be sharing resources, events for teachers and families and staff. We're also going to plan events and celebrate events and share events that are outside of Buddy USD, but also the many things that are happening in celebration of Latinx Heritage Month, actually in our school sites. And so, you can go to our website to find resources and links. We do also encourage all of our educators who want to share and celebrate their Latinx heritage to participate in our poster project. You should have received an email, and again, more information about. You should have received an email. And again, more information about that is on our website as well. I'm looking at the eyes. Nobody knew any of this stuff. Finally, last month, I shared my 90-day listening and learning plan. This plan includes community meetings as an opportunity to convene and engage with members of the BUSD community. And I will be hosting the first community meeting on Tuesday, September 20. The event location and time will be shared with families on our website, our district calendar, and via email, so please look out for that. And we'll be asking folks to RSVP just so I can know you're coming. Make sure I have a cookie or a cracker for you, but really more importantly, to make sure that I have space and an opportunity to truly and thoughtfully engage with each and every one of you. There's been so many opportunities for me to hear from our wonderful students, our dedicated teachers and school staff, and our families and caregivers, and I'm excited for just yet another way to convene you and hear from you. And I look forward to seeing you in my first meeting, September 20, 2022. I am done, President Brown. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you as well, Superintendent Formulto. Next, we will move to our consent calendars. Our motion to approve this evening's consent calendar.
I'll move it.
Moved by Director Alperm. Is there a second? Seconded by Director Sinai. Ms. Travers, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Director, Student Director Siegel?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Alperm?
Yes.
Vice President Babitt?
Yes.
And President Brown?
Yes. Thank you so much. The motion passes. We will now move to our action items for this evening. As you've probably seen on our gents tonight, we don't have any discussion items, but we have three pretty important action items that are first being our action item, which will be a presentation that we will receive from staff on the unaudited actuals for the fiscal year 2021 to 2022. And so to begin this presentation, I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent Follinsby to please come. Thank you.
So, good evening, everyone. I'll be going through the unaudited actros and I'll be sharing my screen. I think it is. Let me do it in presentation mode. Hold on a second. There we go. So I will be taking everyone through the unaudited actros for the fiscal year 2122. And before we do that, I want to remind everyone of our mission and our, the four E's. Our superintendent reiterates this, and we need to enable and inspire diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to our world. For our presentation objectives, we do want to review how the district closes books for 2122 fiscal year. We're going to be looking at our budget or estimated actros, the actual expenditures or unaudited actros. So there are a lot of terms which I'll be going over with you later. We also want the board to approve our unaudited actros and the GAN limit resolution. And there's also a request for the board to approve staff recommendation for the 2223 adopted budget. So these are some terms that we take for granted and we use them throughout our presentation, but this is just a little opportunity for us to step back and look at what these terms actually mean. So for our unaudited actros, we're looking at, at how much the, the district spent in expenditures, sounds weird, and how much we earned for the year. So those are our actros or how the district performed in terms of revenue and expenses. Estimated actuals, this is what we budgeted for the year ended June 30, 2022. And this is our opportunity to compare the both. So what do we project and what do we actually spend for this period? Our fund balance is what remains after expenditures are deducted from revenue, and we usually add it into the beginning fund balance to get the final ending fund balance. Unrestricted funds, that's the focus that we have in this presentation, and that's basically the district's operating revenue. So it's not restricted for a particular purpose. It's used to support operations for the district. And again, the reserve, the state requires us to set aside an amount to be used for economic uncertainties, and the district's rate is 3%. And as a reminder, the adopted budget is based on the governor's may revise. That's the most recent information we have when we actually adopt the budget. And the governor issues budgets three times for the year, so he does the January budget. He updates it in May, and then the final one is, is done in June. So of course, when they, when the governor does his final budget, the district has already adopted there, so we have an opportunity to do a 45-day revise, which we actually did this year because there was significant changes from the, from the governor's budget. The variance report, that's looking at our budgeted versus our actual or, or an audited actros versus our estimated. So a lot of terms that we do use, you know, throughout presentations, but I thought it was, it would be helpful for us to take a step back and look at what these actually mean and to give context to our presentation. All right, why won't you go forward? Hold on. Okay. For some reason, my screen is frozen.
That's okay. Take your time. We can wait it out.
So this is an overview of the district's unrestricted general fund. So we mentioned the reserve in the earlier slides, so the district didn't meet its 3% state, state required reserve. And looking at our budget to actros, we, we spent less by $1.1 million. So we have an unspent budget of $1.1 million, which then goes towards our, our beginning balance for the following year. So we did have unspent balances across random, basically all our objects and our programs. And I'll be revisiting this in more detail just to look at each program within the unrestricted general fund and what was unspent. So in terms of one of the programs in the unrestricted general fund, we know about our local control accountability plan or LCAP plan. And this looks at a year-over-year analysis in terms of what we spent, what we were, what was budgeted and what we spent. So this takes us back from 1415 all the way to 2122. And you can see for this year, we had a balance of $615,000. And not only do we spend it in the particular resource, but we also have a carryover. And because of a board policy, we reserve $1 million in the LCAP carryover again, and this is for a rainy day or to meet uncertain, any uncertainties or to handle our needs when our revenue is less than projected. And then we have a carryover of $651,000. So when we're looking at our, at our program, this is probably pretty hard to see. But this identifies the various programs within the LCAP and the unspent balances by goal in the LCAP. So if there are questions after this, we can revisit that, but it's, it's, you can see for goal one, we had a balance of 113,000, goal two, 104, goal three, 130,000, and other expenses that came into the, the LCAP. And that gave us a balance of $615,000. This is a link in case you want to look at it by a link, but the information is basically shared on the previous slide. So now we look at the district's variance report. And as a reminder, that's looking at our budgets to actual, and again, we're looking at the unrestricted general fund because that's our focus during this presentation. So I'm gonna open this link and take us through that. And I'll make it bigger. And I'm gonna be asked to make it bigger. Okay, so our estimated actros or budget and our unaudited actros. And then we have our variances. And the, the last slide on this page actually talks about what's causing these differences. So in terms of our revenue, you, the, the district's funded primarily with our LCFF, our Local Control Funding Formula, where we get supplemental revenue for our targeted students. And we get base revenue for operations. And you can see that came in very close to budgeted. We had a significant variance in our local revenue. We thought we're going to realize 2.3 million. This came in significantly less, and that's partly due to an accounting process that we did. We, an accounting change for recognizing the way still data checks are handled. And I can revisit some of these in more detail, but this overall swing, the reduction in local revenue and the increase in state revenues, we had a variance of $423,000. This is known as an unfavorable variance because we budgeted 101 million and we only gotten 100. When we look at our expenses and our expenditures, we thought we were gonna spend 96.5 million. We ended up spending 95.2 million. The significant number here is our employee benefits. We had thought 23.21.3, we ended up with 20.3, almost a million dollars. And that's because within our classified and certificated salaries, we used a lot of subs. And our subs do not typically get benefits, but the positions were, were projected, whether they're projected to be filled by FDE and that, that entails, that carries benefits. I also have a breakdown of this particular the, the change by program, which will give you a better understanding of the, the varied programs that go into this amount and what, which ones were unspent and why. So we look at our excess of revenues over expenses, the 881, and then we look at our other, our interfund transfers out. We transfer money to our self-insurance fund to the extent that we have claims that the district covers for our self-insurance funds. And you can see we spent less than we projected. That was 91,000. I'm gonna focus on the significant changes. This change to our post-employment benefit funds, we were scheduled to transfer in 2.3 million because we didn't spend everything that was needed for, this was for COVID funds. We actually had a balance of $900,000 and that's because, because this transfer was actually spent on expenditures, this goes into that $1 million swing that we had further early in the presentation. BSEP, we got more than we projected, and that had to do with the fact that when we look at the actual salaries paid and the salaries, that's attributable to BSEP, it was $658,000 more, which is about six FDE more, and this was BSEP share. Contributions, oh, we had savings in, in sped, and that, that had to do with our mental health program and not spending all our supplies. It was in the, in the supplies and services. We had savings of 200,000 there. So overall, what does this do to our, to our bottom line or fund balances we discussed earlier? We thought we were going to have an ending fund balance of 3.8 million. We ended up with 4.8, and that is a $1.1 million swing that I mentioned earlier. So this is a component of ending fund balances. And these are the explanations. So we talked about the revenue. Here's more explanation here. We had lower interest revenue, lower field trip revenue, lower payments from our partners in terms of their contribution for their, their staff that working with the unions. And then here is a explanation as well about our expenditures and the various categories. And I think we mentioned all of the other ones. And I'm gonna get questions on these, so I'll be happy to revisit that when we get back to, when it's time for the discussion. So this is an interesting slide and one that I thought that the, well, the board as well as our public would benefit from. And this is looking at all the programs that go in the unrestricted general fund. So it's not just, you know, the unrestricted general fund 000 or Quad 0, which is what we usually think of. We have several programs that go, that rule up into the unrestricted general fund. So in terms of this COVID line, the board had authorized a transfer of $2 million that we didn't transfer all of the expense, all of the revenue, and we also didn't spend all of the budgeted line items. This 889 was one of our higher numbers. Home to school had $269,000, and that was across their supplies and their services. And we talked about our LCAP, the 667 here. And then our state lottery, we also overspent in some areas. We overspent in the unrestricted general fund. And we overspent in our lottery, and that's where we pay our utilities. So this 1303, you may, this may look familiar. This is the actual change in expenses that we had in the various report. So this is our committed reserve, and I think the board refers to this as the Josh Daniels report, board policy. And this is a board policy that was approved in October 11, 2017. And if, when certain conditions are met, we're required to increase our reserve by 1%. And as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, the reserve was 3%. And we did not have to add this 1% because the requirements were not met, and it's detailed here in the, in this slide. And we can, the, the, we just didn't need the requirements to make this reserve. So the GAN limit, along with the unaudited actros, you're also asked to approve the resolution. And this is just an overview in terms of the GAN limit and this restricts, it, it limits the lower growth. It's expected to be triggered in 2223, but not in our year that we're reporting on for 2122. But we are required to adopt this as part of the unaudited actros. And this brings us to the 2223 adopted budget, and we're looking at the general fund, which includes our parcel tax. And this is, this, we're introducing this section based on a recommendation from Alameda County Office of Ed to ensure that the district is in compliance with the reserve requirement in its 2223 adopted budget. There was a bit of ambiguity in terms of what needed to be designated versus what needed to be committed. And we finally got clarification from the county in terms of how this should be addressed. So for us to be in, in compliance with the reserve requirement, and this is for 2223. And this all came about because the reserve requirement for the, for the state was actually met. We, we were all required to, to keep our reserves below 10%. So this is, this is new for 2223. And this is part of ED code 421, 127.01. So based on advice from the county, they're saying the most expedient option would be to have the board make a formal commitment of funds upon approving the unaudited actros, which is not something that we usually look at in 2223. But based on this new requirement and the advice of the county, where staff is then requesting that the Board of Trustees approve Where um staff is then requesting that the Board of Trustees approve the 2122. Unaudited actros as presented with the subsequent action formally committing the parcel tax. Balance of 8264339. So I'll explain that. So formally, they um when we look at the unrestricted general fund, we're looking at all the unrestricted general fund, which includes the parcel tax. So after the parcel tax pays their share of the 3%. The balance that's left, we set it aside because that amount can't be used um on random purposes. It has to be used. For um purposes designated within the um within the within the measure. So in the past, the district designated this amount and that was fine. It was totally understood that this is set aside. But with this new requirement, um and because the cap is being um triggered in 2223. The county recommends that that we formally designate and we need uh formally assigned, sorry. Um and we need board action to uh actually we're committing, what am I saying? So we're actually asking the board to commit these balances. And it's um it's a little unusual because we usually designate and this table. Might help explain it a little bit more. And this is all done um with the um advice from our county office. So uh when we adopted the budget, you remember we had the block grant, but that's now moved to restricted, so that's no longer taken into account. And this 26 million includes the balances for all our funds, um funds one and the parcel tax funds. So usually um in our in our um SACS forms, we have actually designated or assigned. Balances for the parcel tax. Now that the um the county is asking the board to commit these funds and that needs a formal board action. So with this amount committed, um we are actually having a reserve of 8.34%, which meets the 10% requirement. Okay, and then um you know, even though our focus is on the unrestricted general fund, it's always a good idea to look at our other funds. Um in the district and how do we actually close our books? So we have um the fund numbers, we have the fund description and we have the balances. And John Cleese is going to be presenting after us, so we can see Fund 21, we we always kind of tease each other about fund balances, but. Fund 21 and and Fund 51, we use our bond interest funds to actually pay for um our our prop our taxes. That um that actually funds our construction as well. So um so this um in terms of. Other funds, I thought it was um it was valuable for us to see the balances. So next steps, um we are benefiting from the whole harmless clause and from the average ADA. That's in our um in our budget right now for the next two years. But at some point, we have to come to um to grips with our actual ADA when we will be funded. It mightn't be for the next two years, but probably for the third year. So we always have to be monitoring our ADA and our enrollment. And remember that we had this one time transfer from Fund 20, which is helping our bottom line. We continue to ha- sorry, to have increases in persons there. Um and then of course, um we'll be packaging this all back um with the first interim. That ends in October and we'll be bringing it back to the board um December 22. And this will um will have a focus on our multi-year. And we will be um be able to wrap all the most current information that we have into that presentation. So um last but not least, I do want to acknowledge our fiscal team. Um we put this budget together um in a very short time and with. Um additional um pressures on our resources. So I do want to acknowledge our team. We were in on Saturday working tirelessly. Um we got the budget passed and obviously no one can, no one works in a vacuum and I just want to give a shout out to my team. And um I'll be willing to take questions or begin the discussion at this point.
Uh yes, we'll go ahead and entertain questions from the Board of Education. First, I just want to appreciate um the presentation. This Assistant Superintendent Valensby, uh I love the facilitation style because you answered a lot of the questions um that I have with just uh. In the ways that you've been the way that you presented, so thank you for that. We'll go to Director Sinai's question followed by Director Vasudev.
Thank you um and to your whole team for all the work that that you've done on all of the various budgets that we've been working on. Um but um I really appreciate, I really appreciate the way the the presentation was laid out. Um I have a couple of questions. Um one question is related to the unspent balances. Um and it there the two that shouted out to me, well, any and frankly, any unspent balance. Of money that's supposed to be for kids in the classroom. Makes me uncomfortable because it's like we we have so many needs of our students, you know, but I know that we can't always spend. What we've identified, but I'm a little um, I'm just wondering like with the 800. You know, thousand plus or minus, well, plus for the COVID. That was unspent. Is that partially because that was multi-year funding and we were carrying some of that money into this fiscal year? Or was that actually money that we were intending to spend in the last fiscal year? Similarly, for the supplemental dollars, which are at 600,000 in unspent dollars. Um those are big, those are big chunks, so I'm I'm curious. And let me just ask my last question. That's one question around the unspent funds. And then maybe after people have questions uh around other things, I'll just say it now. I'm I'm a little unclear on the assignment. Um I I know that what you said is that we need to assign the parcel tax to what we intended to do with it. Hmm. I I so I'm not, I so maybe if there's other questions on the budget stuff, we could move back to that.
Okay. So um do you want me to, I'll respond to you first, Julie, and then um is that what you want me to do? President Brown does respond to each question. So.
Yes.
Huh?
Yes, please, if you could respond.
Well, I can respond to the COVID. So the the district, um we had these. This need, a projected need, so we came to the board and asked to transfer money from Fund 20. To pay for these COVID funds. So these are not restricted COVID funds. These are internal funds that we transferred over. We didn't spend it all. We set it up in this resource to track expenses and we did not spend it all. So um we didn't have to transfer as much from Fund 20. And we did not need to spend as much as we have, we thought. We thought we're going to spend 2 million. And we spent like one, um I guess 1.2 million.
Okay, so this isn't the S or F?
No, 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 this is, this is an internal transfer that we used um when we had this need. To pay for um additional for contact tracing and so on.
Okay. And the supplemental dollars, the 600,000?
Um.
I can, I can help chime in on that, Assistant uh Pauline.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Assistant Jill.
It's like trying to get all that out with my notes. Yeah, I think that, I mean, uh we we recognize the supplemental dollars are really important because they serve. Some of our most vulnerable student populations with regard to our English learners, our students who qualify for free and reduced price lunch. And our foster youth. Um a significant portion of that 600,000 dollars was either due to unfilled staffing positions. Um we had an unfilled OFE supervisor for most of the year, as I understand it. Um and then for the ELD staffing changes um and our RTI staffing. Um while those positions were fully staffed, the salaries and the healthcare costs came in lower than what we had projected. Um so that accounts for a significant portion of that um unspent balance.
And do you want me to revisit the um assignment? No, did you want me to answer other questions about the budget? The on on audit of that?
Um if that's okay, we can ask, take Director Vasudev's question and then come back to Director Sinai's question. If that's okay with you. Direct Director Vasudev?
Hi, it's always hard to follow Director Sinai because she'll ask something that's very closely to what I want to ask. Um but I I'm really happy that our that our new um Associate Superintendent touched touched on these issues because like like Director Sinai said, for me, it's really heartbreaking when I see a large balance, particularly. Uh for, you know, for programs that I know serve our most vulnerable students, like our English language learners, right? And so for me, hard to reconcile when I meet with staff from the multilingual program and they tell me we need more support to be able to reclassify students at the high school. We need more staffing support, more funding support for this program. And then to see a balance of $94,000 doesn't feel great. Um similarly with RTI, again, you know, our for our sped students to see a balance of $98,000 doesn't feel great. And so and I know that our superintendent and our associate superintendent are new. Um and and they're looking at this with with fresh eyes. And so my high level question is, you know, what can we do better next year to make sure that we actually spend the money on our students that are most vulnerable, that need it the most? And I thank you very much and and the budget team for putting together this presentation. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Um. So in in I can respond um in terms of spending, uh um unfortunately, some of that has to do with staffing and making sure we have. Staffing available um to fill some of these positions. Actually, for for the sped um expenditure, there were, there were um conscious um steps taken. To reduce costs and we just didn't reduce the budget as well. So I think it's it's not necessarily a bad thing where we're not spending as much on our on our sped. And I think it's just um we're just being more mindful in terms of. Actual cost, monitoring actual costs and not adjusting the budget timely. I don't need that response to um answer your question.
Right, I think that was going to be the the fix is um just kind of thinking about infrastructure and systems uh. Uh Director Vasudev and really thinking about how do we periodically progress monitor to make sure not just that we're doing with our dollars what we said we're going to do, but that we are. Making those changes in in real time pivots um and also making sure they were reflected in our budget accordingly. So I think there was some decisions that were made or some things that we didn't do that we intended to do, including maybe hiring a full-time staff for positions. We continue with staff, I'm sorry, with substitutes that we can, you know, think about and and start to notice earlier or during the budgeting time or, you know, periodically throughout the school year. And make changes. I would say the 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 true answer also is that when you're thinking about staffing in particular. The hope is always to get a full-time permanent person into positions and so you you encumber with the anticipation of having someone fill that position. And if a if a sub is there the entire year, we love our subs and that's great, but um it's hard to to reassign that money because there is that chance that you would get that full-time person to be in the classroom. So the staffing one is is trickier, but I think overall. What we're committed to do as a leadership team is to just have more frequent check-ins around our budgets, around what we're encumbering, around what we're spending on. And making sure that we're that we're not just monitoring it, but we're also making adjustments to the budget. Reasonable adjustments to the budget, um you know, in real time, if you will. Thank you, Superintendent. It's really helpful.
Student Director Siegel?
Yes, I was just um wondering how this year compares to past years in terms of ending balance um and like filling uh designated funds and stuff.
Um so in our budget book, um we have a comparative, a year-over-year comparative. Last year, when we closed the books, um we actually had an unspent balance of $500,000. So in terms of comparing um budget to actual, we were closer last year. Um but we also didn't have that um that $800,000 difference in COVID. We didn't have that last year. So the years are not necessarily the same. But um but um our budget book is online and that has a comparative of. All our ending fund balances for the last five or six years. So I'll I'll encourage you to take a look at that.
Uh Assistant Superintendent Valensby, can we look back to Director Sinai's question?
Right, so they um so assigning assigning the um parcel taxes. It's uh we usually designate it, so it has nothing to do with the change in the use. It's just the way that we're we're identifying the amount that. Is left in this ending fund balance to be used for BSEP, FARA and our um maintenance program. So they usually is designated, um and it was designated in our. On on our adopted budget, but because of this change and with the cap. The county is asking us to actually commit, which is a stronger arm or a more. Um it needs board action to actually set this aside, this this amount aside. And going forward, um BSEP funds will come back to the board to be committed instead of designated or assigned. Did does that answer your question, Julie, or did you have?
I think so. So it's really, it's it's just a um in a sense, it's a technicality.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It is.
Okay, Assistant Superintendent Valensby, I don't think there are um any other questions uh from the board, oh, Director.
President Brown, can I ask, I'm sorry, can I ask one more question?
Yes, go right in.
In the sense of the the role of the Audit Committee. I know um they usually meet and look at our unaudited budget as well, right? And I'm just wondering, um I know uh Vice President Babbitt is on that on that committee and just. Is that something that they they're going to do this year?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm not sure what date we have a meeting scheduled, but um I will follow up and let you know.
Okay, um Assistant Superintendent Valens, I don't think we have any other questions, so we need to take action. Um if you don't mind going back to your um slide. So that the community and Board of Directors know exactly what the update is on or what the vote will be on. Um. It's red. There we go. Perfect. Okay, so it's two pages, this one and the next one. Um so is there a motion to um adopt the staff recommendations? For us as the Board of Trustees um as well as um. Pauline, do you want to go to the next page?
Oh, sorry.
Oh. The one where I vote for it? Perfect. Um oh, and there was no action on this page either.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there a motion? Anybody can make a motion. All you have to say is I move.
I move.
Okay. It's been moved by Vice President Babbitt. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, second by Director Albert. Um Ms. Haras, can you please call up the role?
Yes, Student Director Siegel?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Albert?
Yeah.
Vice President Babbitt?
Yes.
And President Brown?
Yes, thank you so much and the motion passes. Um Assistant Superintendent Valensby, the next item is for the GAN limit. Um do you still need that presentation up to show the GAN limit page or would you like?
It's just, it's approving the unaudited actros and the GAN limit for that company.
I'm sorry, you cut out for me in the end.
Oh, sorry. So the GAN limit can be approved as part, that the first one that you just did was for the. For it, for the assigned ones, right? Or are you doing every, okay, so the next one couldn't be the unaudited actros and the GAN limit together?
Okay, is there a motion to approve an audit, honored actros and the GAN limit uh as one action item?
I'll move it.
Moved by Director Babbitt. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second in by Director Albert. Ms. Haras, can you please call the role once more?
Student Director Siegel?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Albert?
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt?
Yes.
And President Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. The motion passes. Um thank you, Assistant Superintendent Valensby. I think that is it for us for you, right?
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you again and thank you for your work on this as well as your budget team who always, you know, works and goes above and beyond, especially. always, you know, works and goes above and beyond, especially given up their weekends to ensure that we are having a balanced budget and we also have transparency in our budget that is shared with our community. So thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
Next, we will move for, to our final action item of the evening, which is the approvals to remove plant ops from the Millvia Street project. So here for this item, I'd like to invite Executive Director Facilities Jacques Colis.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, so yeah, tonight we're going to talk briefly about removing plant ops from the initial recommendation to incorporate it into the Millvia Street project. The why that we're doing that as well as the, the cost that's associated and the cost and scope that's now associated with the project in its entirety. So why the recommendation and why now? With adding, we don't do these projects typically without talking to the board. And with adding this into this project, it allowed us to move forward with legal counsel, with our CQ consultants, et cetera. The studies that have taken place through the furtherance of the design criteria over the past four months. The diet, the design criteria, it studied impacts caused by ingress and egress. This is all CQ related. That was CQ related. It also studied the design criteria revealing that a short span structural system would be required. The short span structural, it really impeded upon plant operations. The, or, or the, the use of this facility as plant ops. The short span is what's going to be required particularly to support the tennis courts on the roof. But also to really limit the, the sound and vibration disturbance to the neighborhood of parking garage. The additional, the early CQ considerations have shown that the community impact would require major mitigation strategies. If we added plant operations there as previously approved by the board. The, those secret mitigation strategies would reduce cost effectiveness and impede on the overall maintenance program as well as the warehouse program for the district because we would have to really programmatically change both to deal with operational hours, noise ordinances, et cetera. So one of the things that one of the directors had asked me is ultimately how much did this cost? And we had predicted very early on that it would be about thirty five thousand. And the, the bridging architect was really the only one that had to charge some additional fees and that was to study what it would look like and sort of create the designer, the design criteria to understand the impact. And the total cost of that was twenty nine thousand dollars that we paid to the bridging architect. There really wasn't any additional cost to the CQ consultant as this is work that they were able to talk through while meeting with us and the bridging architects. So how much more is the original project going to cost? And the original project, just to remember, was originally envisioned as several levels of parking with just tennis courts on the roof. On March twenty third, twenty twenty-two, facilities updated the Measure G plan worksheet. The addition for plan ops was twenty-five million. The Measure G program update that, that you guys approved tonight shows a reduction of twenty-two, four, oh, nine, eight hundred. So the total increase to the project budget is roughly two point six million. These, these slides are really important because they explain the why. First and foremost, the initial RFP, the, the RFP that went out for the bridging architect had a clerical error in it. And what that was is it used the master plan that was created back in twenty sixteen. And that master plan showed only a hundred and forty-four errors or only a hundred and forty-four stalls. That number did not meet what we needed. What that number actually reflected was the, the original thinking where they weren't adding any parking, but just saying status quo. The design criteria also revealed the need for a short span structural system. Again, this is to reduce vibration, vibration for the tennis courts, but also to the adjacent facilities. And then soil studies coupled with the assessment of the neighboring property. What we found was we do have some other unreinforced masonry, not us, but in the neighborhood. The original criteria called for piles to be driven to be bedrock, to the bedrock. The new criteria actually calls for us to be drilling them with soil treatment. This has a considerably smaller impact to the neighbors during construction and will not compromise the integrity of the masonry structure on Durant. The short span structural steel system that we talked to, this increases the costs of steel as well as other costs. It's a lot more structural steel and concrete going into the building. The alternative pile system created additional expenses. And then the supply chain issues and the rising costs of material as well as the labor shortage and the rising costs of labor that we've seen particularly over the last two years have really had an impediment on the overall project budget. The final scope of the project that we're asking to move forward with is three levels of parking with a total of roughly two hundred and twenty stalls. The reason that I use the, the, the term roughly in the symbol is right now the bridging architect, the bridging documents that we're creating are actually showing about two hundred and forty stalls. But we don't want to specifically call that out until we get through the design itself to understand how everything will land. We, we don't want to overcommit. We're also looking at three-phase electrical service being brought in for vehicle charges, tennis courts on the roof, restrooms and bleachers, as well as other ancillary facilities as needed on the roof with the tennis courts. In speaking through this design initially with the high school, one thing that was very important was not only a glazed elevator, but a glazed elevator shaft for safety and security so that they can see who is going up and down inside of the building. And then access control state systems for student, staff and community safety. And those access control systems would actually control not only the access to the parking garage, but also to the tennis courts. And we would be working on a system to be put in place so that the community still can use it. But we know who's going up there and we're able to control that so that we don't have the wrong people up there at the wrong times. Before I take you through the conceptuals, I really want to kind of answer a few questions, particularly around the budget, just to clarify for the board. So, you know, really the underlying question is why so expensive? Why are we doing it? Did we talk to City of Berkeley? And I just talked about the total project cost. But if we back out our soft costs, which are part of all construction, we back out the tennis and the ancillary facilities, we're actually only twelve percent higher than what it costs the City of Berkeley and their construction costs. Now that does not include the cost that they paid to buy the land. This is just for construction costs. That twelve percent can easily be attributed to the fact that this is a DSA structure. And the requirements for DSA are much more stringent, DSA being the Division of State Architect. There are approving official and anytime you build anything under the regulations of DSA, you have stricter requirements as it's really hypersensitive to student and staff safety as it should be. Twelve percent, twelve percent represents those difference in the costs. And furthermore, I think there was some confusion. I believe there's some members of the community who believe that the number of parking spaces has decreased while the budget has actually increased. Again, I want to point out from the earlier slides that we originally, our original ROM that we had or our original budget, excuse me for this, was for a total of a hundred and forty-four parking spaces. We're now showing roughly two hundred and twenty. And in actuality, our design professionals believe that it's two hundred and forty parking spaces. So I hope that answers some questions for the board before we, before I hand it over to you folks. The last few slides is just a few massing studies right now, some conceptuals of what this will look like. Right now, the, there is a conversation happening with the athletic directors at the high school as to whether or not this will be either four or five courts on the roof, depending on singles or doubles. But we're working through that as we work through these bridging documents. Again, this is not really a rendering. It's more of just a massing study to show what this will look like. It's three levels of parking with tennis courts on the roof as well as the ancillary facilities. And with that, I can stop sharing and I will open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Executive Director Colis. We'll take the first question from Vice President Babbitt.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you for this presentation and for highlighting that there will be an increase in parking spaces. You know, we are all on board for ensuring that our teachers have parking spaces and that they're not out moving their cars every two hours. And we do realize that all of our educators don't live in bartable or really public transportation areas in which they can get to work without driving a car. And so my question really is around, given that now we understand the City of Berkeley parking lot is half empty, what would that process look like? Because we can, you know, spend all this money and build this now, but we can actually use this funds and start actually providing parking for our teachers sooner. And so I think that would be a, a very good avenue for us to explore so that we can meet the need. And then we could also consider how we can have more spaces. You know, I know that we have issues with providing mental health services just because there aren't really adequate spaces on Berkeley High's campus for, for those kinds of services, right? So there's a lot that we could probably do with that land if we take the time. And I know that the measure called for us to build this lot, but the measure also did give us room to, to, to reshift given shifting priorities. And so I'm just wondering, could we have that conversation first with the city to really ensure that we can't guarantee that parking sooner rather than later using these funds? And number two, well, maybe I'll just start with that one and then.
No, it's okay. And I, I'm glad that you're asking the question. There's a lot of nuances that are attached to it. But ultimately, we have to remember that there is a, a tremendous difference between bond funds that are typically outlined for capital improvements as opposed to general fund. Now, bond funds are not legally allowed, and this is a nuance that most folks don't know. But we cannot legally use bond funds, bond funds for long-term leases. We can use them for short-term leases, for example, when we bring in interim housing, when we're doing a construction project. But the permanent rental of those parking spaces or ten-year plan of a rental of parking spaces, et cetera, that cannot come out of the bond fund. Legally, that would have to come out of the general fund, which would result in a huge decrease to classroom spending, right? So we would actually be lowering the dollars that we have available for our student success, right? For our first instruction by trying to rent that. The reason that the, the prior board had listed this project as a marquee project in the bond language is because it was always the intent to build because it was always the only way that the district could afford it. Now, there has also been conversations with the city about the possibility of purchasing some of the parking spaces in the Center Street Garage. And these are early conversations and this is where I got my numbers from, from their construction talks. They gave me an idea of what we would be looking at just as a tertiary value. And again, for the same number of parking spaces, if we back out the tennis courts and all the other facilities, we're going to save about twelve percent. And that twelve percent of construction, that's just on the construction. That doesn't factor in what they paid for land. Lastly, let's, let's say that we save the twelve percent. Right now, based on the numbers of spaces that we would need, we would have to contribute a minimum of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars per year to the city for the O and M costs of that garage. For the city, they believe that that cost as the contract comes up to be rebid is going to be significantly increased. Again, we cannot spend bond funds. So even if we chose to try to save twelve percent and only build tennis courts right now, where the, where the parking lot is, right? If we wanted to buy those spaces from the city, we're going to save about ten to twelve percent, but we're going to have to find somewhere between three hundred fifty and five hundred thousand dollars a year out of the general fund to actually pay for the O and M costs for our portion of the garage. Does that make sense?
Almost. So you, you said we could purchase the spots from the city.
I know what it'll cost less the land. There's no agreement to purchase the spot. There's early conversations and they, they haven't continued for a myriad of reasons, primarily because of the encroachment of this.
So my question is, if we purchase the spots though, that would qualify for the bond, use of bonds funds.
I believe so, but we haven't spent a ton of time with legal on this and we would have to just to make sure that we're okay. I believe it does because it's the acquisition of land or real property. So I believe it does, but again, we have to factor in what it's going to do to the general fund in the long term.
Okay, and then my second question was, my initial understanding of this action that we were, that was coming for the board was just to remove plant ops. Is that correct? We're just removing plant ops. We're not necessarily saying. So can we give direction that we want those talks to actually happen? And I'm saying this because there is a large amount of the community who keeps telling us you need to make sure that you've had this conversation, like you need to make sure that you've worked with the city. And that's something that people want to do. So I just want to make sure that we can set up some kind of framework where we, where we can respond to that ask from our community.
Yeah, so we have had some initial conversations with the city. Again, these are conversations that actually translated directly to me having what their construction costs were. What I do not have is what their land acquisition costs are or any of that. If we want to press pause on the project to actually go through that, I'm happy to, to take that through a formal process. But again, I think what the board would, what I would ask that the board absolutely recognize though is if we, if, if the board would like to press pause on this, we can. But if we do that, we also have to ask our CBO, Assistant Superintendent Valensby, in the best case scenario, if we're able to do this, can we commit that additional three hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars? Because the bond.
I'm not, I'm not asking for the general fund. I'm asking for the conversation between legal to happen to see how we can actually use our bond fund measures to purchase spots now. If we can purchase spots now and we could use other bond funds money or other monies to like actually build better on the, on the parking lot. Because we have, you, as you know, we have a significant space issue at Berkeley High School.
We do.
We have people who can't have offices, can't have conference room, they struggle for space. And so it is something that we should, I think, dive deeper into given these new concerns that past boards may not have had as prevalent as we have now.
Yeah, so we can absolutely get more detail and report back on this. We have done a lot of work on this so far, but we can absolutely report back to you, Vice President Babbitt and the rest of the board.
Well, in this facility subcommittee, right?
Yeah.
Student Director Siegel.
This might be, I don't know if this is a valid question, but what, during the construction period, where is staff parking going to be relocated to?
It's a very valid question. I appreciate. That's where the short-term leases versus the long-term leases comes in. So it is an absolute allowable expense of the bond and it is in the budget right now of the project to lease the same number of parking spaces during construction. Because again, bond funds, we can pay for short-term leases such as interim housing when we bring portables on campus, but not long-term. So it's always been in the budget and the plan. Right now, there's not enough surface street parking for the staff that currently can't fit in the lot and to flood the streets around Berkeley High with an additional hundred and thirty vehicles is not realistic and we recognize that.
And so the number of spaces would reflect the current number, not the constructed number?
That is correct, yeah, because otherwise what it's doing is it's preemptively paying a lease for something that we're not offsetting. So that's where we get into a little bit. It, it's, it, it could be potentially legally challenged for the fact of we're not leasing to offset the one thirty, but rather the two twenty to two forty.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Director Alpern?
I think Directors, I think Director Sana and Director Vasudev had their hands up before me.
Oh, I'm so sorry. The order is so off on mine. I can just see hands, but I can't see the order in which they were raised. So we're going to take a gamble. Director Vasudev, would you like to go first and then Director Sinai? Hopefully I got that right.
It was actually Julie, but I'll. No, I think, I just wanted to raise really quickly, uh, just the issues.
I'm going to remember that.
It's going to make me pay back with it. The issues that I, that I raised at the, at last time that we discussed this project and I understand that this might not be the matter beforehand, but in these conceptual designs, I, I know that last time that this project, you know, came before the full board, there were comments about the importance of moving traffic away from Millvia because as you know, a lot of our Berkeley High families and students and education workers fought so hard. and education workers fought so hard for the protected bike lanes that we, the beautiful bike lanes that we now see, uh, you know, leading up to the high school. And first I'll say, I'm not excited about more parking spots. The planner in me does not like that. Secondly, you know, I don't see any bike parking or, you know, as part of the design, right? Like there should be some kind of either transportation demand, demand management element to this. A bike parking, I really hope that you're talking to transportation staff at the city about these, um, features because they're such an important part of a project like this. And so I don't see that reflected in the design schematics and would like to see that reflected in this, in the, in the design schematics. We can't do things that are polar opposite to the kind of public projects that the city does, right? Like you look at a city garage, the garage is right there. There's bike parking, right? Like what kind of TDM incentives are we using, um, for the people that can? I understand there are people coming from long distances that are, that, there are education workers that really live far away that are coming to, to work in our district and we value them. But there's also, you know, people that might not know about the different resources available to them. So, um, I would hope that that's part of this study too. And again, the entrances to the, to the lot matter, right? We, we want to make sure that we're not encouraging more traffic, right? And more congestion on the street where there, where people fought so hard for protected bike lanes.
Yeah. So those are, those are all great points and questions, right? Uh, in regards to the Milvia Street and the protected biking lanes. First and foremost, there is absolutely no entrance or exit for vehicular traffic onto Milvia, right? That's, that's the glaring thing that I need to say. The second thing is in response to even how the vehicles travel to and from the garage, that's something that's studied during the SEQA process. The recommendations are made and the mitigation strategies are put in place. For example, left turn only, right turn only, et cetera, that actually excuse me, could possibly prohibit the, the entering or exiting of vehicular traffic off of Milvia either at all hours or during certain hours, et cetera. So the SEQA consultants that we're using are based out of Berkeley and they're one of the leaders for the Bay Area, if not the leader for the Bay Area. So we know that they understand the importance of it. We've actually had long discussions around Milvia Street and they've already started, began to capture that in their thinking. Lastly, in regards to, and I think it's lastly, if I missed anything, tell me. But in regards to bike parking, it's important to point out what I'm showing you tonight are not designs or renderings. These are really massing studies. As part of the RFP that went out, we did have a call for bike parking, particularly indoor lockers, et cetera. And it is something that was always intended to be incorporated into the design. I didn't, when I, when I gave you that one slide that said the actual scope, that's a very high level. Um, we can definitely drill down into that a lot further if you'd like. But at the end of the day, that's a high level. The bike parking has always been intended.
Okay. And I, and, and I know that that study is part of the SEQA process, like I under, you know, as planner, I understand how this works. It's also equally important that we talk to transportation planning staff and particularly Vision Zero staff at the city because they're the ones that are really looking at traffic congestion and how that's impacting, you know, the, the little people that are biking to school. And so, you know, we want to make sure that we're, we're accounting for their commutes, particularly, uh, during, uh, you know, the morning commute and after school.
Yeah. And I have had numerous conversations with both Fareed and Hamid over in the city. Uh, and we will continue those conversations, but thank you so much for your comments, Director Vassad.
And I hear we, I hear we have a, a, here we have a committee member on her board. Um, thank you for the time, Director Vassad. Um, so John, thank you for the presentation and I first want to, um, extend appreciation for the revisiting of the plant ops, um, on that site. I think, you know, that there were, you know, kind of reservations from the get-go, but also understanding of the need to try to figure out how to move forward. And so I appreciate the stepping back and realizing that, you know, for SEQA reasons, a variety of reasons, it didn't work. And also it's my understanding that escalation would have happened regardless of whether or not the plant ops was moving forward in there or not. I'm, I'm working on a project in my, in my work and the escalation is huge just due to all of the supply chain issues and, and a variety of other factors. So, um, I guess the, the question that I, I did want to make sure that when we do do massing study presentation, that we actually have Milvia look like a bike path. Um, so that people know that we're recognizing that and we see that it's there. Um, so when we come back and reiterate that, that would be great. I want to talk a little bit about the city parking for a second because um, prior to COVID, parking was massively impacted downtown. Parking studies show that there was no way that we could absorb the teacher parking anywhere. Conditions have changed. COVID is here with us forever, probably. Um, and I'm wondering if you've had a chance to talk to the city planners to how they're projecting out the evolution of parking because there's no guarantee that the space that exists for parking now is projected to be the space in four years.
Right.
Um, as COVID is on the decline and normal functioning starts happening again downtown. So I don't know if they're actually, because I want to make sure that our planning is not, just like our planning isn't, you know, rooted in, you know, one point in time. Um, when there's been decades where parking's been seriously impacted downtown. So I don't know if there's an anticipation that that level of utilization is going to come back, especially as UC Berkeley has taken parking off of a number of their sites. It's created greater impact. So that, that's kind of one question that I had. And then, um, well, I think that's the main question that I had. If you've had any conversations about that.
We have, and the response from the city is that while slow to recover, they are actually seeing downtown Berkeley beginning to cover, recover. With the reopening of more restaurants and more facilities and people going back to the office, they increase, they expect their increase in parking as well as parking participation in the garages to actually increase now. They didn't, they didn't talk about any numbers because they don't have that crystal ball. They're not saying we expect it to be back in a year and two years and four years, et cetera. But what the city is saying is that they, they are seeing a recovery. They are seeing more people come back to work and come back to the nightlife within Berkeley. And they expect that the participation rates in the garages and the surface street parking will continue to grow.
And I, I just remembered the other part of my question is, I mean, I think there's also on the horizon, a lot of housing that's being looked at downtown. Which means monthly parking, you know, gets purchased because they're not building parking in the housing. But my question, my second question, when you looked at the cost and the 12% increase, if you were to go that route, um, you talk about the land acquisition at the parking lot. I mean, the city has owned that land.
Yeah, I know.
Generations and decades. So.
The city was very.
Could you, could, hold on, could you define when you talk, there's the bond and the purchase? And then you mentioned O and M?
Mm-hmm.
And could you say what O and M is?
Thank you. Sorry.
My understanding is that's, that's the ongoing operations that we can't get away from. Um, and that's what would have to come out of general fund. So could you explain that a little bit more?
Nope. Great questions. And I'm sorry because you know what? Sometimes we all live in that world of acronyms, right? So O and M is operations and maintenance costs. The city currently contracts that out. So they are spending, I, what I believe to be considerably higher than what it's going to cost for us to continue to maintain in-house as we do all of our facilities. So that's the first piece. The, um, sorry, I just drew a blank on what your first question was. Oh, the land acquisition. Yeah. So what the city has clearly commun- communicated is that this, these are the numbers for the construction costs. And this does not include the land acquisition cost that the city had at some point in time, or maybe it's the land value cost that they would, if we, as we continue to further this discussion, that they would absolutely intend to put in it. Additionally, there, uh, one of the comments that was made was that they believe that if we were to do this, they are going to have to completely refinance their bonds. And they're going to look basically where, if we're causing that, we're going to have to pay for that as well. And the 12%.
They did buy air rights to go up two levels.
Right. Last thing, just so you know, because, uh, you mentioned it about, you, you said the 12% increase. It, it's not an increase. The variance is their construction cost versus ours. Ours is about 12% higher. And the, the reasons for that, one is several years have gone by. So if we think about that in regards to escalation, that's really very little. But two is because we have to go through the state architect's office. We will not be going through the city planner. Ours are held to a much higher standard.
Director Alfred.
Thanks, President Brown. Thank you, Director Clues. Um, I have a couple of comments and I guess a question. What is, and, and if you said this already, forgive me, but I wanted to just emphasize that although I agree with moving the maintenance operations out of this project and, and like Director Sana, I said, appreciate your willingness to kind of, you know, do the due diligence and, 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 and come back to us with, with, uh, um, with the request to remove it. That, that decision to remove it from this project, um, creates a huge hole in the bond that we're going to have to fill to find a place to put the maintenance facility. That's the, because the reason why we chose, um, Milvia Street, which is Director Sana, I said, we, and you said too, we, we always, you know, we, it was never perfect. It was by far the least expensive option. And, um, we're going to have to spend, I forget what we talked about in the subcommittee, but tens of millions of dollars more out of the bond because we can't not find a place for our maintenance facility. And that's going to impact our ability to do all sorts of other things across the district that we planned to do with this bond. So not only isn't there, isn't there a plan B? I know you're aggressively looking for a plan B, but we don't have one now. But whenever we find it, it's almost surely going to be much more expensive than the, than the plan that we had at Milvia Street. So I just want to make sure everybody like is aware of that because that's going to cause us to, to have to adjust other things that we plan to do in the bond. So there's a real cost to not having it at Milvia Street, even though I think it's the right decision. Is that?
Yeah. Yes. And you know, if I can expand on that a little bit, you know, the cost variation for moving it out of plant ops to even some of the other options that we studied is in the $50 million range. So that's first and foremost. Secondly is we are not limited to the options that we have discussed with the board so far. Um, since I got here four years ago, I've been looking for a facility. But to give you an idea of how we are right now in Berkeley, um, one of the board directors just shared with me recently about two weeks ago, a property that they heard of maybe coming on the market because someone was vacating it. Um, we had our commercial broker look at it. And while someone did just announce that they're vacating it, it's actually been in planning for two years with a buyer who is already committed to buying the property. So that's the issue that we have in Berkeley is primarily that there is no land. If we could find a blank slate, right? We can definitely try to go into this a little bit cheaper. But even some of the blank slates that are there, like some of the old foundries, they have such tremendous cleanup that's associated with them that it becomes cost prohibitive.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks for that. So I think we're, we're just going to have to wrestle with that and figure it out.
We are, and we're going to continue to look for those options. We're not putting this on the shelf because we know that, you know, what the board has authorized as the interim housing plan is only intended as an interim housing plan for plant ops. It's a short-term solution and we need permanent answer.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, and then on the question in this, um, Director, Vice President Babett's and, um, questions and Director Sana's too about the city. Um, I mean, as a process matter, like this is, this whole plan is something that we've discussed periodically at the facility's subcommittee, including, um, uh, two members of work can't direct you to do anything, but including the subcommittee's enthusiasm for you exploring, for staff exploring, this option with the city. While not, while not pausing a board-approved project that we've promised to both the Berkeley High community generally, particularly with respect to the teachers', um, parking, but also the tennis court, the tennis community. So, um, I didn't understand there to be any need to pause the project, but, but we, but we did think is, and it appears to be the case that you've been engaging in conversations with the city. Um, and it seems like there's a number of factors that are still sort of at play that we need answers to. The, I mean, I, the ones that I just wrote down from hearing you talk was one, um, capacity at the Center Street Garage. If, if it's, if it's bouncing back to full usage or close to the same usage as before COVID, then it's kind of a moot point. They don't have the spots.
Recovering is, is the word that they're using.
Right. I'm just saying like that's, that's one factor. And if it's not the case, and if it stays at 50% and they have the spots, then that makes it possible. So one is, are there spots that they could have? Second is their willingness to do it, right? It's not, just because they have the spots doesn't mean they're going to be willing to do it. Third of the legal issues that you were talking about with Director, Vice President Babett. Um, and then fourth at least is the impact of the general fund. So I, I guess I just wanted to confirm that we can continue with this plan, vote tonight to remove my maintenance from the project and at the same time have you both continue with this board-approved project that we promised to the community. And at the same time, do the real due diligence to figure out whether there maybe is some different way we should go and, and if so, follow that lead, but um, and, and then, and report that back to the subcommittee and then the board. Is that, is that, is that?
Yeah. So, yeah. So I was trying to respond and perhaps not well, but to Vice President Babett of saying that we're going to continue with the project and we can continue this due diligence, we can press pause if that was the request of the board, because I thought that was what I might've been hearing Vice President Babett say. But it doesn't sound like that it's so. It, you know, tonight we're seeking action to remove plant ops. If the board wants to amend that action by all means, otherwise the intent is for us to continue on full steam ahead in the design process and the SEQA processes we're doing now. And we will continue those conversations and revisit this back with subcommittee and then board.
And if in those conversations, it turns out that there's a viable alternative that's that, and then we should press pause or, or abandon it altogether, you would come to us and, and, and tell us that and we would make.
Of course. That just as I'm here now telling you that as we've done these studies, it's apparent that we should be removing plant ops. So yes.
Okay. Thanks, Dirk.
Vice President Babett.
I have a couple of questions and I do want to say thank you to my, uh, board colleagues for your thoughtfulness and your responses and your questions also. And I'm just a little, um, concerned that we would spend money to keep moving ahead while we're still in an exploration process. That to me seems like if it takes us two months to explore, why keep spending money? And secondly, you're not going to actually lose time because my understanding is we have to buy, we, we planned on leasing spaces from the city garage anyway as the short-term solution to parking. So it's kind of a conversation that you have to have for both reasons. If, unless I'm incorrect, didn't we plan on buying spaces for them to use from the Milvia garage, I mean, the city center garage?
Yeah, but I'm not exactly sure where you're coming from with time. And what I mean is the, the time that we would be leasing spaces would only be while that lot is, while our lot is actually closed for construction.
Right. I understand that. So I'm saying if you're having a conversation to negotiate the leases, you could also be having the same conversation on how to purchase that without moving forward, wasting other monies if we decide to go a different direction. So that, that would be my only question. If it takes a couple of months to really just uh, respond to the city needs. And I also want to know who, who is it that you're talking to in the city? And also why are you looking at how much they paid for it versus how much they would charge us for it?
What they would charge us for it is what they. I think as far as. Yeah. As far as who I'm talking to at the city and I invite anyone to chime in if I'm wrong here. But I think out of respect to them, it should be a conversation that we have offline and not necessarily one here, as I don't want to invade, inundate anyone's inbox of the city. So I'm happy to have that conversation offline. I just don't know that I want to, that we should have that here.
Okay. Well, I'm only asking because the people that I'm hearing from, from the city are saying they haven't had these conversations. So that's why it is important that we clarify this and that we put in a real structure to like formally, uh, at least so that we all know that we've actually done the due diligence that the community has asked us to do. And so that we're comfortable that we haven't wasted money, right? Because again, if you're saying that it's going back up, to me, that's telling us right now is the best time to buy these spots then. Because then we can get in during the recovering phase, which should also give us better pricing. So those are my thoughts and, and I do feel very strongly that we need to at least make sure that we've dotted all our i's and crossed all our t's on this. Because I don't want to have to go before the committee and not have an answer, not the committee, the community, and not have an answer to this very simple question. What do we do to make sure we could partner with the city before we went out and spent X dollar of money per spot building a new parking lot? And then have to tell them, no, I don't have. And then have to tell them, no, I don't have space to do X, Y, or Z for your child, because Berkeley High is cramped and we don't have space for a, a wellness center or additional classrooms or high-tech this or that that our kids need. And so that's why I'm pushing so hard, so that we could actually know for sure.
Yeah, I, I hear you, and what I'll say is, is this, is that so, we, we've had a number of conversations. We can definitely share that with you and bring that back. What I'd like to do tonight, if it's okay, is I'd really like to follow up and respond to your questions, I'll sort of articulate to you the conversations that have been had, and we can look to see if there's a further process. For, for tonight, what, what my intent is, is just to make the board and the public understand that we're gonna remove or we're requesting that the board removes plant ops from this project. And then I absolutely hear your direction of how you'd like us to move forward, even if, as Director Alper mentioned, it's one or two board members. What I'm committing to you is we can absolutely come back to the board and for that, have a further discussion about this.
Thank you so much, I'll move to remove plant ops unless anyone else has comments.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, Ms. Charles, can you please call the law?
Student Director Segal.
Yes.
Director Vasudev. Director Sana.
Yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Vice President Babett.
Yes.
And President Brown.
Yes, thank you so much. Well, now we'll move to the second and final opportunity for public comment. Are there any public commenters this evening? Can you please promote Marty Teblum?
Hello again.
Hi, Marty.
Hi. Um, I want to congratulate you all for the conversation in the last half hour or more. This is exactly the level of conversation that should take place, at the very least. This conversation should have taken place at the facilities subcommittee meeting back in early twenty twenty-two. So whatever six, seven, eight months ago, this is the level of conversation that should have taken place when what you were shown was one slideshow with a green, yellow, and red boxes. That was all the information you had in a couple of paragraphs. So I want to congratulate you, since we got there, we just lost eight months, so I think the issue of haste has to be removed, because the loss of time is because of, uh, how to say, lacking process on the side of BUSD, not anybody else. So I think that has to be taken off the discussion. Secondly, this is the time for creative thinking, we all understand now that Measure G money cannot be used for paying rent for parking. We understand that, we heard that multiple times in these meetings. Got it, I see the time, thank you. But this is the time for creative thinking, but because what you're going to approve, what you basically are approving here, unless you move to another decision later on, what you're basically approving here, twenty-seven million can pay for forty-five years of rent. If I call now the parking, whatever contractor there at the city, and I rent a spot, forty-five years for two hundred and forty spots, that does not make financial sense. So this is the time for creative thinking, as Director Babett is pointing out, of to see how we can find the sourcing to pay for the parking that is needed and not spending twenty-seven million. Third point. You seem to be drawing, uh, setting the target and now drawing the circles. You're explaining why, oh, we will need our own parking, because there's other housing being built and they don't have parking, and all kind of other explanations. Or for example, the tennis courts, those are the most expensive tennis courts ever. You are creating the problem, you are making this a DSA project. You are making this a project that needs a glass elevator to the third floor because of the tennis courts, because it needs to be ADA. If it was a parking garage, it doesn't need the elevator for the second level, you can have all your ADA spots in ground floor, and on, and on, and on. This is time for creative thinking. You should put the project on pause and not double talk and seriously look for creative thinking, how to use the money for students and teachers in their classrooms and give teachers the parking tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you as well. Next, we will call Celia Reos, please. Hi, welcome, you also have three minutes as well.
I'm so sorry, I always am on mute. Um, I wanted to thank everyone for the thoughtful discussion and prioritization of our kids' spaces. The other thing I wanted to mention is, hopefully in the future, the board can also address the extreme fundraising that's required by our elementary school PTAs so our children can have physical education and art. Thank you so much for your time and for all of your work, it's so profoundly appreciated, thank you.
Thank you as well. I, I don't see any other public commenters this evening, and I don't see any board members with their hands up for board member comments, and so the Board of Education will recess back to closed session and will report that out from after our, during our next meeting. Thank you all, have a good evening.